We'll call this meeting to order on this July the 7th, 2022. Appreciate everyone staying with us through the work session. The, I'll get my deck of notes here and get it turned around and cover them up. I know that was one of our longer work sessions. Sometimes the work sessions have lasted from 15, 10, 15 minutes. And we have had some for two hours, two hours and a half. So this was one of our longer ones, so just bear with us. What are you looking to you want for, Rob?
It's my bedtime, we've been here that long.
Oh, mate, this is a, this is a regular scheduled meeting with the Dade County Board of Commissioners. We have the same place, the same time, on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice, this meeting was given to our local ordinance, Dade County Sentinel, and hosted in our hallway. This time I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery.
Here.
Mr. Hartline.
Here.
Golf.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
And chair is present. As always, before we start our meetings, I asked Mr. Golf if he would lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Chairman, I would like to, since we have the distinguished pastor with us, the Trenton United Methodist, Brother Flower, would you lead us in our invitation?
I'd be honored to. Lord, we give you thanks for this group of commissioners who gather, who do their due diligence and work hard to make this county a great place for everyone to live. We just ask you to continue to lay your blessings upon all the efforts made here and to give wisdom for this ninth meeting and choices well made, for it is in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. In salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice sprawl. Thank you, Brother Daniel.
Thank you.
Anybody want to talk to us tonight? We moved this up several months ago, our citizen participation, it's first. So if anybody wants to come up and say anything tonight, you're welcome to. If not, we'll move on with our meeting. Mr. Lowery, you want to go ahead and give your committee report, please?
Yeah, I'll start out with the 9-1 activity calls. We got 210 EMS calls. The county has ambulances as well as, as well as memorials, so that includes both. Our emergency services, which includes all of our volunteer fire departments, the 9-1-1 emergency, the Dade County Public Works, Georgia Forestry Commission in the Dade County Quarter, there was 243 of those. There was, this all includes Trenton Police Department, Lookout Mountain Drug Task Force, and Georgia State Patrol, there were a total of 1,577 calls for the month of June. So that's a total calls to our 9-1-1 center of 2025. I was, I was out last meeting for COVID, one of the first meetings I missed. I think I missed one in my first eight years, but that's the first one I missed I know for sure in this eight years, in this four years. I don't like missing meetings, but that was the one right after the lakes. And so I, I now want to be sure, I thank everybody who got out and voted, and especially those that supported me and showed the confidence in me. And I take it serious and I love serving, so thank you.
I told everybody you don't have Disney World.
There was no Disney World, I tell you, that's, that's something you don't want.
Not really, no. I explained to them, and I'm glad you and your wife both see that, that was scary thing, you know, both at one time. Glad it's over with. Mr. Hartline?
Well, this last month, we had a, we was able to host the DZDIN 7 and 8U District Tournament at the Sports Complex, June 18th and 19th. Our, actually, our 7U team come in second place, they, they, our 8U team, they didn't make it to the finals. That was, that was all that had going on down there. We did have, during that tournament, there was a lady that lost, had lost a tennis bracelet. I want to say thank you to one of our employees, that Caden Dairy Berry, he actually found it and turned it back in, and it was probably worth between, somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000. So that woman was very grateful, it was five carat tennis bracelet, so, you know.
Still honest people in the world.
It's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's good to know that we still have honest people that, when they found it, they were able to give it back to her, and she was tickled to death. And then, and for the month of June, he done 43 electrical inspections, so.
In one month?
That's unusual, that's just, just for the month of June, 43 electrical inspections. That's all I've got on this, for this month.
Mr. Golf?
Well, I'd like to say, we got Mr. Rodney Ross back here representing New Salem. And a good thing that happened is they were able to go back to their fireworks, 4th of July fireworks, this past Saturday evening, and again, it was second to none. You couldn't go anywhere and find any better with the, with the fellowship and the time before and then the fireworks themselves. So I know Rodney, it takes a lot of people to do it, but thank y'all for taking that time and, and all that it takes to get to that, because there was a slew of people there too, and that, that's just a place to go and enjoy. And then also, there's nobody here maybe with the 1945 days, but Nathan Wooden did an excellent job. And again, it wasn't just Nathan, it takes a lot of people to put that together. But I mean, it was a sea of people at Jenkins Park all day long, and this seemed like everybody having a great time. The biggest thing is thanking the good Lord that we're back to being able to do things like this, because it's been a while since some things were able to happen. But again, some good things happening in our, in our county and our city. I do want to report on sploshed. I didn't think I'd be doing, reporting this good, but we have, I think, set a record on the splosh that came in, $310,649. Now, this is oddly enough, this is money that was spent in April, it's just now showing up. April was $305,000, so we need to keep what's happened in April happening all throughout. But I think the 300, Rebecca, is that not a, maybe a record for all the time that we've had sploshed? And we've had three or four, five year terms of it. So I can't explain it, but it's a great thing, and I want to, I want to say, when we talk about the T-splosh, we just voted to put a referendum on this general election in November. That will give us an idea, but now Phillip said the gas tax won't go on that, but it would be somewhere similar to that, whatever comes in in this penny would come in to go toward our roads, bridges, rails, striping, all the things that we want done on our roads to make them safer. So as we get into that, think about it, it would raise our taxes, our sales tax, up to 8% if that passes, it will stay at 7% if it doesn't. But it would be of a great benefit, that just, you just kind of compare those two, and then as Don said earlier, when we're going through the millage process, which he's doing right now, if this penny is up, then the lost penny is up, and the lost penny reflects back on the taxes that we pay, on our property taxes and on, so that does give us some relief off of that, because everybody that comes through here spending that penny has helped this to be, to be a reality. So it's good to report on 310,649, and I hope that's something that just keeps going.
Ms. Bradford?
Okay, we've got a total of 878.87 tons hauled off. 674 went across the scales, which is, is decent, and then the 204 is what's left, was, is the, the free household dump. 260 work orders, which is not that bad. And I just wanted to stress that, that a good group of people are trying to, to do some maintenance and some work at the transfer station. There's, there's lots of things that need to be maintained and taken care of, so we don't have to replace or rebuild or anything like that. I'm not sure that, Carrie, did you get any pictures up? No, but, but everybody goes theirs, oh, there you go, there, there's one, so there, there, and we're gonna keep working on, on getting, we're probably gonna try to work on the scale next, because that's, that's a lot of metal to replace once it gets bad. So, so the doors were recoded and I'm gonna try to work, the windows were redone recently, and we're gonna try to get in the inside and try to work on that a little bit, because the water was washing in and coming through that brick, because it was so old. So we sealed it and, and painted it a tin, the seal's actually a painted color, so, so it's kind of a two in one bonus. But, so we're gonna keep, keep trying to go along with that, so we're not having to replace anything or rebuild.
Yeah?
That's it.
I was gonna say this last, but I'll go with it, we have had, because I mentioned railroads every month, and it's getting, it's getting worse as far as Southern Railway goes. They're, they're a little bit better here in the city, they're actually breaking the trains now, but from there north where our private, where our private citizens are at, we've got dead end roads up there, Gwin Road, Clark Street up here, we've got numerous calls from them this week, tracks were blocked, you know, three to four hours at a time, same thing up in Gwin. And then we've got CSS that's coming in the picture. I've never, I've never had any complaints over the years, until just a month ago, back to CSX. And that's, they just come into Dade County on the very northern end, then go right back into Tennessee, but we do have a couple of drives there that's, that people, that's the only way they got in and out. And we did have some people the other day that couldn't get in, and they did, they wound up sleeping in their car, elderly people, you know, and that train was on track for, it was out, it was like eight hours, seven and a half, eight hours, and so, but we're doing all we can do, I've got all the contacts out, possibly, I've called, I've got, like I said, our congressman, our federal peoples involved in it, and just hopefully they'll, they'll work with them. I mean, that's what it took to get Southern, Norfolk Southern to do what they're doing right now, which is, you know, it's better, it is, at least in our industrial park, since we've had our last commission meeting, why? Because as I mentioned that night, that train had been on it since midnight the night before, and they were supposed to move it while we were actually in the meeting, and Robert called me right after that, and I think they didn't move it till about 10 o'clock that night, didn't they?
I think it was the next day.
Next day. So, you know, but I just want all those people, I don't see anyone in the room here that's really affected that much, but I want everybody to know out there that, that we're working hard to try to get this, to make it better. It'll never stop, because, you know, you live across the railroad tracks, you know, you're, but most of these people are used to trains meeting each other, and, you know, 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, they're gone. But when you're blocking these tracks for hours at a time, you can't do it, you can't, we can't have that, we can't have when school starts back, them handing kids under the train again up there, which can't, it's, it's, something's gotta happen, something's gotta give, so anyway, we're working on that. Another thing, I've had, had a lot of calls this month. You know, we're talking about growth and about how many electric inspections that station done, I've done a few of them also, but I've been getting a lot of calls from people that actually have bought property in here, that's, that's come in and new people moving in, and they're not for sure, they're, they're not for sure on the guidelines as far as their state health department. We've got, I'm helping with two different people, groups this, this week, one with our regional health director in, in the room, and one with Christian, which is our local person, but they're not really reading, they don't understand, some of these people have already built houses, and they don't really have a permit to put a sewer in. And then when they come up with a, when the health department looks and they come up with this, okay, this permit that they could possibly get, it's called a drip system, which is right at the end of, I mean, that's the worst of the worst, and you're looking for a three bedroom house, you know, around $30,000 for a sewer system, so. And these people, you know, they, you know, we, we make it plain to them when they come in for an electoral permit, that they have to go down, talk to the health department, and health department, of course, is a state agency, you know, and it's state laws, it's not county, this is state and federal laws as far as environmental health, you know, and for whatever reason, you know, that may not be, they don't want to build a house here, well, that may be the only place on that whole property that perks, where you can put a filter on it, and they go, and these people, they go and build a house on it, well, that's, you can't do that, I mean, it's just, and there's, there's quite a bit of that that's happened, it's just right, it surprised me, you know, we've, I maybe had one or two calls in the last 15 years on, that happening, but anyway, we're trying to, we're trying to stress to people, and they need to listen, and they need to read the instructions and what the law is and what's required by the state of Georgia. Just want to throw it out there, the, Melissa, this is another thing, we, well, not pertaining to that, but I got a call from DOT, we've got a meeting scheduled next week, I just told Melissa, we're trying to help these people out on the railroad in her district, on a crosswalk for the elderly to go across the state highway. We won't have any money involved in it, but we, we have the, the numbers to call to get them involved with these people out there, because it's, is somebody gonna get, they're going from one side of the road to the other, and wheelchairs and walkers and whatever, so that's, that's something, the people that listens to that, we, we've got that kind of going, we are scheduling a meeting. Another thing, the, and I've had issues with, and it's been going on for a couple of months, I really not thought that much about it, but this month, for some reason, I don't know whether it's just people are just getting started and summer's here and they're building and, but I've had a lot of people questioning our county right of ways. You know, okay, I bought this property, I'm from, I'm from Chicago, Illinois or whatever, or from South Florida, and, you know, I'm putting a fence up here, you know, and it's, you know, I don't, they don't show my IDs, it just says to a, to the county right of way. Well, if you have any questions about that, we have got, Billy keeps it in his truck, I keep it mine, I've got it here in the office of every county road, every road in this county that, of what the right of way is. And, and, and it's not, if you, you know, if you, a lot of them are not the same. Sligo Road, we've got, on the north end of that, we've got some 50 and some 80 foot right of ways. Scratch Ankle, we've got 50 foot, and some places we've got 100 foot, a feet of right of way. So don't just guess at it, or don't go, but what your neighbor says, you need to come in here, if you're not familiar with it, you need to check, well, let's burp off or gap, we've got some issues, we've got some complaints on the, some things that's happening on the right of way up there right now, parking, permanent parking that they're building, gravel, they got piles of rock and piles of gravel, we're going, we're going to have to talk with them, they gotta move it, because we've got 100 foot right of way up that, from mountain, and that means that's, that's 50 foot from that center line over, and from that, that point down, that's yours, but from there in, that is, that is government, that is your right of way, my right of way, and, and if, and what I tried to explain to the guy up there this morning, or today, you know, if, if there's an accident happens up there, and we've already talked to them about it, you know, we, we need to send them, I'll get Robin draft a letter or whatever, but if there's, I don't care if it's a bicycle or motorcycle, and, and they, they actually have a loss of life there because of that, or whatever, those people are, are liable. I mean, you know, they can't play like, you know, do it and play dumb, that's over. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just telling everyone out there, and, and most, most people in the county that's lived here, most of them, they know what the right of way is, I mean, they, it's either wrong to their grandpa or whatever, and they know, right, but, but there is legal right of way, the county, we've got some roads we don't have any, we've only got prescriptive right of way on Creek Road over there, there's a lot of Creek Road, like with the hang lighters at, going through that little section right there, that we only have prescriptive right of way, which is just from edge of pavement to edge of pavement, or ditch line to ditch line. But then there's parts of, of that, that road over there, when the road was widened, that we've got 80 feet on it. So, you know, just, you just need to call or talk to Billy, talk to me, any commissioners, I mean, we can, we can find out for you immediately, before you do anything, and you gotta take it in. A few years ago, first time that I really was, a corky, corker up at the Creek Road, he had put up probably, it was probably 800 feet of fence, his fencing company came in, and they'd already drilled the holes and set the posts, and they set them about six inches off the pavement, and I mean, they got a beautiful place up there, I mean, it's beautiful, but, but he didn't, you know, he didn't call or anything, you know, didn't, they thought, he thought, well, you know, well, I called and talked to him, and he was nice about it, he said, you know, I didn't even think about it, he said, I just did, and I figured y'all didn't mind if we, you know, if we mowed it, which we don't mind you mowing it, but not to put a fence up, because that, that, you're accepting liability on that thing, you know, and so he was nice, real nice, but they, the fence people are still there, they pulled them up, they moved over, I went up and showed them where the right of way was at, and that's where the fence is at now. So that could have really, it was, you know, it could have been really expensive, but anyway, I'll get them on something else, I know y'all, but it's, it's important, it may not mean a lot to the people in this room, but it's, it's really important to people that don't know that go ahead and do it, and then they got a backup, and you know whose fault it is after that? It's ours, they blame it on us. I mean, so right now the night, I'm just telling you, you know, this is the correct way to do it, just call office, they don't, we answer our phone, I answer my phones seven days a week, and I keep it with me, I can tell you exactly.
And the state's the same way.
The state's the same way, I keep a, I've got a, in a, in a, in a computer in there, and I think I've shared it with most of, I can go online, I mean, I can go in there and that, and I can tell you exactly, if you give me a mile marker of where you live at, I can pull it up and it'll tell you, and it's surprising how much right of way some of the state, some of the roads in this county the state's got. A lot of them are 100 feet, most of them are 80, you know, so that's another thing, I'm glad you said it, as it is, even though we, we don't responsible for a state, but we, we can get you an answer quicker than you can call GDOT and talk to them, because they'll put you through to several different people, but we've got their, their, their site, the real updated right of way on the, on the rest of. Let me see here now, the, okay. I'll, Phillip's already spoiled my bracelet story, I had a good story too about that five carat bracelet, but dead gummy. The, what else did I have on here? Told you, told you about the crosswalks. But the biggest thing, you know, is that we've been working on all of this and we've been worried about, and I'll end with this, is that budget, you know, is, is so critical that we, we've come up, we're at this point right now, because I worried more about this one, I guess, than any I've been through, you know, as commissioner, because of the way times are, but thank goodness, as Robert gave you those reports, for whatever reason, whether it's, whether it's the tractor supply, or we're selling more hamburgers at McDonald's, or, you know, I mean, or the lineman, man, the loss and the, and the splosh and all of that, and, and, and things are, things are good, you know, and, and it's just, I'm just, I feel good that we're at this point, we're gonna be able to keep our millage rate the same, we're not going up on the millage rate, was, was, as far as the tax increase, the tax increase will be advertised in the county, as a county, and from what I understand, school board too, but that increase is related to how much money that we're taking in, we're taking in more money because of the assessments and all that, we got our property, my property one, my property values, that goes back to these people here I'm talking about, we've got people coming in here buying property, and they're paying premium prices for this property, you know, in Dade County, and when enough sales happen, the way they, they don't just pull us out of the air back in it in the accessories office, they've got to have real comparative, comparative property to base that on before they can say, okay, your three acres is not worth $150,000, well, you have something worth $225,000. They've got at least three parcels that they're comparing it with, so, but the reason, the reason you sell this advertising in the paper, and it, we've done this for the last few years, because we've had growth, is because we are collecting more money to operate the county with, so we've got to advertise that by state law as an increase, because it's an increase in revenue. I'll end on that, I'm about to run out of bullets. Y'all got anything else you want to say? Since I'm in dog.
Just mentioning that.
Do what?
Mention the railroad crossings, a lot of them are in my district.
That's right, you're on the north end.
Yeah, Steel Road, Belk Road, Carroll Road, and then now we're having on Hooker Cemetery Road, and when we talk about the splosh, that's, that's another good thing that it could be used for, like on Steel Road, it's a short distance to Belk Road, and we could get them to where there's a railroad overpass, and that would probably help, what do you think, 60, 70 families?
Oh, yeah.
Have, have a way out of that area.
Yeah. Because there's some of the ones, that's where they're handing the children under the train and through the train, that's where the people have been coming in on first shift, or going, coming in on, on, in day shift, and having to leave their cars there till midnight, one, two o'clock in the morning, not being able to get home, and they had to cross the train and go home, and that's where a lot of them, I had talked to one guy up there three weeks ago, I'm out of mission this, last commission meeting, I think, but he lost his job because of it, young man, he just got a job at one of the big plants in Chattanooga, and he'd been late three times because of that train, third time, they told him to go back home, and it was a good job, I mean, it was, it was something that he would probably would, and so that's not right, but to, you know, you're, you're at their mercy, you know, and I've explained that to the, to the people, I talked to a railroad, and I said, well, look, you know, we, we have a business stock right there, you know, like, makes you just want to, but you're right, Lamar, because, you know, you, you've been getting calls just like me, you know, so. Okay, let's move down. Ms. Mindy, you've been looking at me, come on up, you're first. She's our manager of our Dade County Library, and give us her report.
Always listening, and I appreciate always the opportunity to come, I know, as we've been talking about budgets, how important it is that you all think about the library and that county residents rely on us, and that y'all always, you know, are so good to us, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity every month to come up and sort of say what we're doing for the county and what we, you know, kind of what we have to offer. So first, we've got our July calendar up here, these are just all the events we're gonna do in July, we've already had our medicinal tea workshop and our, here's some pictures, Rising Fawn Gardens came, we had 23 people, which for me, that's a record for an adult program at the library, obviously showed an interest and a need. They came and brought all these herbs, and they taught everybody things that grow naturally in and around, things that they can plant that are gonna grow well, to make these sort of medicinal teas, so it was a really popular adult program that we had. I want to introduce Ansley Kegel, she is, she just came on a couple of weeks ago, she's working with us through the Northwest Georgia Workforce Development Grant, and she's a resident of Hope House, and she'll be with us through March, and she's, the grant provides for extra help keeping community, public places clean and sanitized, and she comes in every day, and she's amazing, and we absolutely love her, so we're excited to have her.
Is that through Paula?
That's through Paula, yeah, Ms. Paula got that sorted out, and there's actually a little article, Sentinel did an article on Ansley, and sort of talked about that, that process that Paula got, got rolling, she said they'd done it last year, and because it's really a help with summer reading, I don't know, how many of y'all have popped in on any of our 11 a, Thursday 11 a.m. summer reading programs, but we have a lot of kids and families come in, 150, sometimes more on Thursday, so we, the county comes and cleans forests twice a week, they come in Thursday morning, but then we get this massive onrush, and we get so many books being turned in and handled and touched, so Ansley comes in, and she'll wipe down and sanitize the books that are coming in, all the surfaces on the Thursday, so we're, we feel really lucky and fortunate to have her, especially in the summer months here. Next, I wanted to talk about some of our fabulous teen volunteers, I know at one of these meetings I put a call out, I said, we need teen volunteers, sure enough, we have five amazing teen volunteers right now that are absolutely critical to, again, our summer reading program with all these people coming in. Oh, can we go back real quick? That's okay. I just wanted to point out, one of our programs, we, they come in and they do our door count for us, they give out raffle tickets, they help set up chairs, they help take down chairs, those hundreds and hundreds of books that we have to clean off and then re-shelve, we've taught all of our teen volunteers shelving, they had to take a little course and learn how to shelve in the Dewey Decimal System, and you see down there, Amelia is reworking our nonfiction section that was all in a disarray, so we are very fortunate and grateful to have these teen volunteers. Our summer reading program is going full force, we have, oh, that slide is even outdated, I've got my slides to Carrie a little bit early, we have 241 participants in the Bean Stack Program, and we've had 42 participants already finish the summer reading challenge, which is to read 840 minutes for the summer. They've already finished and received their prize, which is a brand new book for their home library, and you can see those kids were all picking out their brand new books from our selection. And in June, we had 503 participants just for our summer reading programs, you can see how packed the library is, here's one, and let's flip to the next one. Here's one and let's flip to the next one. Oh my gosh, the Georgia Mobile Dairy came. I told y'all I was excited about that cow coming in a truck and she did. Ms. Maggie came in a truck, they, the kids got to, um, see her, they got to pet her, they did a little bit of a milking demonstration and it was hot as all get out, but everybody came out. We had water, iced water down for everybody and very popular. All of our programs have been amazing. Our teen program, I know that it's a demographic that I've mentioned before, we are trying to build in the library and, um, Spencer Pennington, our youth education coordinator, coordinator is a phenom and he really is doing an amazing job with our teens. You can see we've got a game night, an anime and manga club and, um, a Super Smash Brothers tournament where they all go and play Super Smash Brothers. So we've really been building our teen, um, involvement. Part of it is the, um, volunteers that we have, part of it is the incredible programming and, um, the next part is our, um, oh, Pokemon League, sorry, I'll go back to my other thing. Pokemon League is another thing Spencer instituted. This is an all ages group and there's the card game, there's a video game, there's a little lesson, there's a craft, um, it's drawing sometimes twenty-five, thirty people and he's doing that twice a month now, so it's really exciting. The kids are super, um, proud, they've got these little trading badges or, uh, I'm saying it wrong, I'm gonna get in trouble, they're not trading, they're, um, trainer, knew it began with a D, trainer, they can be, they, uh, they win so many games and they get to become trainers, so that's a really popular program that we're seeing a lot of growth with. Um, all right. Um, TAB, our teen advisory board, this is what I'm so excited about. We've got several members that are part of our teen advisory board. This was the first newsletter that they put out. I gave y'all a demonstration of our second. They are responsible in writing a monthly newsletter for the library where they're doing book reviews, they're showing, showcasing some of the new book arrivals that we've got, they're talking about programming. Um, they really are a fantastic group of young people. Uh, Spencer is also working with them on marketing, doing some research and they're gonna be, uh, basically promoting some of our programs and some of our things on social media, learning about, um, Facebook and Instagram and posting on there. Um, uh, the other thing, they've also been, uh, integral in planning some of the teen programming that's coming down the pike. One of the things that we're gonna be introducing in the fall is, um, testing, uh, programs for the ACT and the SAT. We're gonna do like a six-week program using some of the library digital resources for middle school and high school students to get ready for those tests that happen in the fall and the winter. So we're excited about that and we're gonna be doing, um, a creative arts class with a focus on, um, emotional well-being and emotional health, which is something I know we've been talking about as well in this community, is trying to raise the awareness and find a way to help young people that might be dealing with some of these things. So we're gonna use, uh, some creative arts along with some social, emotional health and well-being programming in the library. And that's all I got, other than our door count for, uh, June was three thousand two hundred seventeen folks coming in the library in the month of June.
That's a lot of folks.
Wow, awesome.
That's pretty exciting. Well, thank you again so much for your time, I appreciate it. Thanks for all your.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good report, good report.
Did you get your book stands?
No. From the high school? No.
Are they building them for you though?
Well, we're working on it. We're in, we're, we're working on it, you know, it's summer break, so.
Oh, yeah.
I know, so we're working on the, the high school shop class, building those, but our display units, but we're working on it for sure. Thanks y'all.
Next, Laura Beth Cunningham, she said she wanted to be last tonight, so she'll be ten o'clock, I guess, before she, oh.
I'm gonna go fast.
Think her husband grin back there, she, he's hungry, I can tell.
Yeah, he's hungry, he's thirty, he's like. I always talk fast, but I'm gonna talk even faster. So we hosted, uh, the first of our two summer chick-to-chicken day project camps. Um, it was June sixteenth, the four Hers learned about anything chickens, um, they learned about the breeds, diseases, egg colors, um, grading out the broken out eggs and candling them where you hold them up to the light. Um, we had all kinds of like chicken games for them. I came up with a chicken bingo game and let me tell you, the kids in this county love some bingo, had no idea. Um, and then we took them out in the hundred degree weather heat and we made them do sack races and play kickball. Because we need to be well-versed in the four H club and everything. Um, and then I hosted a two-day greenhouse gardening camp, the twenty-first and the twenty-second, and I taught them about the life cycle of plants, what all plants need to grow and how to take care of them. And the kids built their very own greenhouse with just, uh, Scott and I sitting back there with the directions saying, get this, get that, and they did every little piece and built that greenhouse in two days. Um, we planted some seedlings and then we planted some live plants in there and they had a really good time. Again, we played some gardening bingo and this bingo is like the way to go for all the kids. Um, we were able to do this because we got a grant from the Cusa River Soil and Water Conservation and they purchased all these supplies for us and all the materials that I used and, um, we ended up putting a drip system in it cause we had enough money. So I mean, it's a pretty cute little, good little greenhouse. Um, on June seventeenth, we'd hire our monthly craft night and we built birdhouses out of these little half gallon Milton cartons. I should have brought the one that I built cause it's really cute too. Um, but of course, since Scott is here, he volunteers to do everything now. Um, so we painted all of them black, so that gave the kids more time to decorate them however they wanted and, and they had a good time doing that. The next one is on the twenty-second of this month. Um, next week, I'm gonna take a group of kids to tell us and we did just actually fill up all of our spaces, um, today. Uh, everybody likes to do the last minute around here, so, you know, I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm gonna have to cancel this trip and then literally twelve people called today and like, oh, let's go. So, um, we're gonna do that next week and they are, um, they're gonna get a guided tour, get to do the planetarium and then they have like this two-hour like science hands-on thing that they're gonna get to do. Um, also this month, I'm gonna take another hiking trip to the Glen Falls that's up on Lookout Mountain. Um, there's still plenty of spots available for that and then we will have our second chick-to-chicken project day camp and I'm coming up with a lot of those things, but since I got chickens for the first time, I've learned a lot about chickens and so I decided, uh, my chickens have grown up enough that they're like fighting each other, you know, for that pecking order and I'm like, I can't believe that's a real thing. So we're gonna talk all about that and it's, I don't know, I've really enjoyed the chickens as much as the kids have. Um, I took these two great little girls to Stevens Gap Cave last week. Um, it was hot and we hiked three point eight miles. Um, we get to this cave and that's the mouth of the cave right there and I was thinking, oh my gosh, they're not gonna wanna do this. But I was like, okay, girls, you ready to put your helmets and your headlamps in? And they were like, yes. And we went down in this cave and we watched, uh, we saw waterfalls and it was really awesome and I was just so happy that they were so willing to do that, cause I thought they would be scared, but it was really good and we will definitely take that trip again and more people should go. That was, that was amazing. Um, I'm just serious stuff. Our four H livestock team traveled to Coleman, Coleman, Alabama to kick off the summer show season at the Firecracker Futurity Show. The twenty, two thousand twenty-two livestock team consists of Braxton Wood, Amelia Bearden, Nolan Building, Callie Hughes and Ella Hughes. All the exhibitors had a great first show season and Braxton Wood took home his first ever banner for fifth overall breeding doe, um, which is a really big accomplishment cause this is only his second year showing. The Dade Greater Gardener class met in June and the program was on canning and food preservation. Um, it was very popular, um, because all the women in Dade County can, so it was really nice to see all of them like arguing about how they can something and, you know, the USDA says you're supposed to do it like this and they're all like, well, I do it like this and I've been doing it like this for years, so I gotta kick out of that. Um, the next meeting is July twenty-sixth, not June twenty-sixth, um, and that program will be on fall vegetable gardening. The upcoming tri-state Beekeepers, Beekeepers Association meeting will be on Monday, July eighteenth. Um, and they are going to have that meeting here instead of at our Ag Center because our air con, air conditioner is still on the fritz and it's a hundred and eight degrees in there right now, so it's pretty hot.
Well, they, they're working on, you know, they, we ordered a whole new unit, they're trying to get.
I know. Um, it was doing better since they came out and then with the really hot week, um, I'm pretty sure the repair that he did is just gone now, um, so it's hot, but that's okay, they're gonna come here, um, and I'm sure they will like that. The tri-state Kedelman's meeting will be on Tuesday, July nineteenth at seven PM and this meeting, we alternate every month and it is gonna be at Dade County and they're gonna have George Legion. He is a farm succession attorney and he will be discussing holding companies in trust for diversified farm operations. Sounds very complicated. That is all I have, so.
Any questions? Good report. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Mr. George Williams, chairman of the Alliance for Dade or Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, thank you. These are two tough ladies to follow, I'll say that for sure. Uh, there we are, we're, uh, recent activities, we're at around a hundred investors, uh, we seem stuck on that, but.
Yeah.
We'll, 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 we'll do better over the fall season. It's summer and, uh, people are not around, so that's, that's makes it interesting. Anyhow, uh, we did sponsor, we did a sponsorship and we volunteered at the nineteen forty-five Dade County Fair. Robert, to your point, it was a wonderful event. Nathan and his team do a.
And y'all had a lot to do with it. I, I, you know, after you said that, I got thinking, y'all.
One of the welcome locations.
Y'all were one of the.
And, uh, yeah, so we, uh, we helped out with that. Uh, we're also partnering with Dade, uh, Dade First Family Connection with our clothing box, which is at the Welcome Center, so stop in there. Uh, we also have items for sale, birdhouses by the, uh, Construction Trades Group at the high school, uh, Civil War books and local artists. And by the way, we had birdhouses on sale at the fair and they actually sold a few, so that it's great for the students. Uh, what do we have in upcoming events? Well, we currently have registration going on for the Plum Nellie Depot Arts and Craft Show, which will be held on August twentieth from ten to five thirty at the Trenton Community Center. It's sponsored by the Alliance's Public Arts Committee. Uh, right now, I think we have ten artists signed up, uh, and we're looking to hopefully get around twenty artists. It's our first attempt, so we're pretty pleased with where we're at so far. We also just kicked off this week, sign up for Dade Expo. It's kinda hard when it's ninety-eight degrees outside to think about the holidays, but, uh, we actually have people signing up like crazy already for the expo, so that'll be at the high school. And we changed the date this year, we're actually going to do the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so it's going to be, uh, you know, in conjunction with, uh, that's also a national kind of thing. It's actually Small Business Day, uh, that chambers put on throughout the, throughout the country. Uh, what do we have going on in, in July? Well, we're currently getting bids, uh, to replace our directional signs around the area. Uh, most of our signs that we bought, uh, have disappeared because of, basically because of quality issues, quite honestly, they blew down. Uh, so we need some good signs up to get people directed back to the Welcome Center. We're also beginning our search for our Dade, uh, Alliance President and CEO and we're also going to hire a tourism director. Uh, so get ready, I mean, all these things we've been talking about, uh, this evening, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna work on bringing more tourists, so, uh, we need to work on.
Now, who's your, your CEO's left, is that right? Your, your president, who's?
We're gonna, we're gonna have a president of the Alliance and then we're also gonna add a tourism director.
Okay.
So somebody that'll be responsible for the Welcome Center as well as putting programs together, uh, for, to promote tourism for, for the county. So, yeah, and, uh, uh, just so you know, Titus, who's been with us for two years, is resigning, he'll be gone at the end of the month. Uh, he has some personal things that he has to deal with, but we're, we'll miss him and he's helped us immensely to get to where we're at at the Welcome Center, so, uh, anyhow, so that's how we're moving forward, uh, to promote tourism. And I also learned tonight that we're gonna help with T-Splost, how we educate our community about how the importance of that, so we're gonna, Don will be giving you a call and be talking about how we can, how we can help with that. And I also just wanna thank, uh, the commission for appointing me to be on the IDA. Uh, June was my first meeting that I went to and, uh, I hope to make, uh, a difference with that organization, uh, as well. My last slide is kind of our numbers for the, uh, for the Welcome Center. We had, uh, either local or out-of-town visitors, we had sixty-nine visitors in the month of June, uh, and I know so far in July, it's, it's a pretty hectic pace over there, so we're, we're, and if we had our road signs up, I think we would do an even better job, so, uh, any, any questions for me?
Thank you for serving.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate it, good report.
Okay, thank you.
Donna is, uh, here tonight, does, have we got anybody, Will?
Audrey.
Hmm?
Audrey.
You're gonna, you're gonna do your report for the, uh? Come on? You're, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be Donna, don't it?
I'm gonna be Audrey.
Okay.
What did they ask you, Donna? Um, she has asked that we report that there's going to be a Dade County Historical Society. Their business meeting will be Saturday, July the sixteenth, over at the library at ten thirty AM. So anybody that's interested in that or beginning to be interested in the history of Dade County, it's a good group, they know a lot of stuff and there's also some books available. So again, that's Saturday, June the sixteenth, uh, ten thirty AM at the library. And as far as our Dade County Historical Preservation Commission, um, Jamie was here tonight with an update and a report and things are actually moving along and beginning to take shape and it looks like we're going to be able to start some construction, um, around August first. So we thank the commission for your interest and for your support immensely and looking forward to good things happening and the heat going away too, so. Any questions about any of this? If so, call Donna.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys.
All right, thank you, good report. All right, move down to number five, our monthly financial report presented by Don Townsend. If you could go over that place.
As of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the general fund had a balance of one million two hundred fifty thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars. The, um, fund, the investments on fund was one million three hundred thousand, so that's two million five hundred fifty thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars. U.S. Treasury Federal Asset Fund was zero, Sheriff's Special Fund, a balance of eight thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Drug Abuse Education Fund, twenty-three thousand eighty-five dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars. Jail Fund, twelve thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. And the Federal Asset Fund Department of Justice was zero. American Rescue Plan, uh, has a balance of two million nine hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. And the accommodations tax is now at one hundred thirty thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and employee flexible spending account, ten thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. Payroll account has a balance of one hundred twelve thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. The two thousand fifteen Splost still has a balance of two hundred eleven thousand three hundred and five dollars. And the two thousand twenty-one Splost has a balance of seven hundred sixty-two thousand nine, uh, six hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh, looking down at our income statement for the month of May, finishing May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, we, for the month, we brought in nine hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, it looks like we budgeted for about four hundred ninety-six thousand, so we were over, uh, I'm sorry, under budget for, no, in excess of funds of four hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred twenty dollars. For year to date, we've collected twelve million six hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred six dollars and, uh, that is again in excess of, the budget amount was eleven thousand four hundred nine thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars, so excess of one million two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars. And you can see. And you can see, we have collected there at 96.07%. Expenses for the month of May ran, uh, a little high, $1,315,143 compared to the budget of $1,211,843, so we were over $103,299. For the year, we were, uh, had budgeted, I'm sorry, expensed $11,742,271, but we had budgeted $11,816,640, so we're right there at $74,369 to the good. And again, budget attained so far should have been at 91.67%. Revenues attained were at 96.07, and expenses attained came in at 89.34%. Local option sales tax for the month came in at $248,519.43. That is representative of April, what was collected at the merchant level in April 2022. SPOST, the special purpose local option sales tax, came in at, um, the, and these are records, by the way, $310,649.31. These are, SPOST and SPOST came in at the, a record high, uh, since we've been keeping records, um, so that's wonderful. Uh, the next thing is 2021 SPOST, and you see that we've actually already entered the original allocated cost. So, that's, that's what I was talking about earlier. It's hard to, with all those are zeros there, it's hard to show any kind of total expenditure and a completion percentage without an allocation, so, um, now that those are going to be voted upon, that's, that's excellent. And then at the bottom, uh, we have the 2015 SPOST worksheet, tracking worksheet, and again, uh, we're, we're nearing completion of that, within about, uh, $200,000. The fa- final report is on the Tax Commissioner. I didn't print it out tonight, so I'm having to. Uh, that is that, uh, she collected, it, now, this is a whole year, July 1st, 2021, nope, sorry, through, is it a whole year or, it's March, May 31st, May 31st, I'm not sure. Anyway, it's 95.79%.
It's not all year.
And, yeah, so 95.79% collected, uh, so that's $4,978,557. I've budgeted $5,197,500, so make sure, let's look at this. Uh, we have one more day of month to go, so, yeah, so she'll be right there at 100%. And actually, um, I started to say Jane's office, Angie's office ti- typically will collect more than a, 100%, and the, the way she does that is interest, and, uh, you know, when she has to charge interest on someone that's late, late fees and stuff, so it usually goes over. That concludes the financial report.
All right. Any questions or corrections on, okay, as presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report as presented by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, I call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, okay. Robert, you got any legal matters?
Just, real briefly, Mr. Chairman, an elections contest was filed, uh, in the Republican primary for the state, the Secretary of State's race, and they filed it against the Secretary of State, uh, the state of Georgia, and I think all 159 counties, most of them, but anyway.
Most of them.
Yeah, most of them, not a lot. And we were served, uh, on Tuesday, uh, as a part of that, and we're preparing an answer to be filed in response to that petition.
It's, it was filed out of Sumter County, I think, wasn't it? I believe, wasn't it? There's some, that's where it was originated.
It was, it was, uh, south of Atlanta, and my geography's bad, past there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll just have to, you know, there's no, you can't sit back and not.
Right.
Be represented, so that's just, you know.
Yeah, as you can imagine, but most of the counties were served, and most are like us, that really had very little involvement as, as well as knowledge about some of the allegations, and so, uh, we kind of track.
This is about the, the machines.
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Okay, well, keep us up on it, you know, I mean, it's just, okay, we'll move down to number seven, uh, No One Finished Business, uh, number eight, we got a vote here, we're gonna call a vote, we discussed this quite a bit over there, uh, let me get my resolutions back out here. All right, uh, let's see here now, to start with, it was on, uh, Resolution 11, and then we've got 12 and 13, and this pertaining to the assumption of the property over on Sales Lane. Uh, I'll start with, you know, I guess we need to do them separately, don't we, Robert?
We did.
Resolution R.41-22, approval of the intergovernmental agreement, Dade County Water and Sew Authority regarding the purchase, ownership, and management of Sales Lane property.
Mr. Chairman, there was, there's actually one up above that, is R-40-22.
Approval of the, oh, yeah, assignment of some, okay. So, we got four, really. Well, one, two, three, uh, nope, we got three.
Three, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Yep, 10, 11, 12. We got, uh, 10, Resolution R.40-22, approval of the assignment, assumption, and release agreement with Jifa and the Dade County Water Authority, uh, Water and Sew Authority. Uh, do I hear a motion pertaining to that?
Make a motion?
Now, do we make a, we're making a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm confused about that.
Say what now?
Yeah, we need to clarify that.
That's right.
Yeah, 'cause it sounds like you're wanting to vote for it.
No, I'm wanting to make a vote.
Okay, we'll call, I mean, I need, I need you all to get a motion and a second, right, just like we, yeah, okay.
Yes, we do.
To, to vote or to?
To vote on this resolution.
Okay, they have a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, then we're gonna bring it to a vote, okay?
Yes.
All right. I have a motion and a second, and call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
I'm still confused. If we're just saying yet we're gonna vote, okay, I'll vote yes.
No, it's approval.
It's, it's a motion to approve the, uh?
This, this is it.
Okay, Mr. Hartline?
No.
Okay, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion carries. Let's move to, uh, number 11, Resolution R.41-22, approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Dade County Water and Sew Authority regarding the purchase, ownership, and management of Sales Lane property. Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, vote on this?
I'll make a motion to vote.
That we vote, okay. They have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, call a vote for, uh, 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 vote to approve, uh, this Resolution R.41-22, uh, with assault with Mr. Lowery?
No.
Okay, and Hartline?
No.
Okay, Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, okay. All right, let's move to Resolution R.42-22, approval of a quitclaim deed from Dade County Water and Sew Authority regarding the purchase, ownership, management of the Sales Lane property. Uh, do I have a motion to bring this before the board?
Make a motion.
Okay, they have a second.
Second.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll entertain that motion to approve the R.42-22, uh, and call a vote. Uh, Mr. Lowery?
Oh.
And Mr. Hartline?
No.
Mr. Goff, yes, okay. And Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Chair votes yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move down. I want my vote in chief. Let's move, uh, move on down here to. Thank you. Fine Methodist right there.
Happy Methodist.
Baptist wouldn't have woke up.
The reading of the minutes of the, uh, last monthly regular meeting, any special call meeting will be, will not be required, since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance, the minutes of public record available for view in the County Commission Office. The minutes are included in the consent agenda and will be considered for approval under this new business. This time, I ask Mr. Townsend to go through the consent agenda, read it to us, and at that time, after that time, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Okay, we have, okay, approval of the agenda as per, uh, amended by Mr. Lowery, uh, adding item number 17, um, approval of the previous meeting minutes, uh, the review of the personnel status report, Resolution R.43-22, the appointment of Mr. Adam Austin to the Industrial Development Authority to replace Mr. Evan Stone, um, for the term of July 8th, 2022 through December 31st, 2026, and that is the unexpired term. Uh, Fire Chiefs Association request for multi-gas detectors for New Salem, Trenton, New Home, and Davis Volunteer Fire Departments from company, uh, called 10-8 Fire and Safety of Bradenton, Florida for $6,303.68, uh, for the purchase of three pursuit vehicles for the Dade County Sheriff's Office from Prater Ford, and those are 2022 Explorer four-door, uh, car, uh, vehicles. The cost for each was $38,757.34. We do allow a max of $50,000 in case they have to add lots and et cetera to them. Imaging and indexing of documents for the deed records and grantor and grantee index books from 1849 to 1997 for Superior Court Clerk's Office, uh, for co, the company is CO File for $50,750, and that is from ARPA funds, also from ARPA funds, an upgrade of the Microsoft Dynamics SL 2015 to the Microsoft Dynamics SL 2018 CU7 Financial Software and Administration for $15,910. Uh, let's see, and then Resolution R.44-22-2021, a special purpose local option sales tax, uh, SPOST budget allocations. We have the revised intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Trenton for use and distribution of proceeds generated by the 2023 Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Referendum. Resolution R.45-22, a call for a ballot referendum to impose a 1% transportation special local option sales tax, commonly known as TSPLOST, to be held on November 8th, 2022. And that's it.
Any questions, corrections?
I have one question. As far as the patrol cars, the pursuit vehicles, we're only approving the $38,000, is something correct?
Well, we have, you know, the, the, we have to capitalize the entire vehicle, so we, you know, if we have to purchase lights, and, um, you know, the overhead lights, the striping and the markups for the vehicle, and there's some, radio equipment.
And the laptop thing.
The laptops, all that stuff. Typically, they, we do that at that time of the vehicle purchase, so I, you know, the, those are just standard purchases at the time. If we can use the excess, the equipment from the former car, we will. Typically, we can't use the trans, the, uh, technology, because you're talking about, it's already, you know, five, six years old, so it needs to be replaced, so, um, I can't tell you what it will cost next year at this point. I mean, we can come back if you just wanna do the cars.
But they'll lock the price in, though.
Not on the, not the technology. The car is the S, but not the.
But they should, they should, though, if we, if we actually got the package.
It's from different.
And we know that, we know what's gonna happen. We got these cars coming, you know, surely.
Yeah, I'm talking about the computer that.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm.
You know, well, man, I mean, you'd think that, uh.
I mean, we, we wouldn't be purchasing until we get the car typically, so.
Do they usually do that at the dealership, or is that not?
No, we do that in-house.
That's a different vendor, then.
Yes.
So, they'd have to come back and ask for.
Well, we always adopt them together, because we capitalize it together.
Yeah, we would normally have a number together.
Well, typically, we get them within a month, not 12 months, so, you know. So, we'll take whatever you want to do.
But there is some of the thing, like the light bars and all that, it may work from.
It may, and it may not.
It may not, well, true, you know, so.
And those usually are just such unique equipment, we typically get them, there's like one or two vendors around Chattanooga they get them from, so, I mean, they always try to get the best price, they don't just go out and, you know.
And the signage will have to be added separate.
It always is, and it's not much, it's just, what I'm saying is, it will, it typically never exceeds $50,000.
So, can we reword that to say we're approving purchase of three cars not to exceed $50,000, including accessories?
I thought that's what you said.
Amen.
Yeah.
I'm making my.
So be it. Okay, uh, you change that in the consent.
We got it, we got it changed.
Okay, all right.
I made a motion to approve.
All right, I have a se- a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, okay. All right. No executive session tonight, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, unless y'all got something else y'all wanna.
Motion to adjourn.
They have a second.
Second.
Okay, call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, okay. Just making a adjourn, appreciate everybody staying here with us.